Hello Huskies. Thanks for coming over to the Town Hall Meeting. Lisa and I and Nancy Suttonfield did a number of these Town Hall Meetings last semester, and we felt it was important for us to be able to come out and have a conversation with the community here on campus and those from town. And I see Mayor Ray here. Mayor, thank you for being here as always. We really think that's important for us to talk about the institution, where it's going, the environment that we're in, and answer any questions. So to get started, I'm going to say a few words about a few things here. Let's put up the agenda. I'm going to talk about the State of Illinois budget and update you on a little bit that I know about it. The strategic plan, did y'all pick one up at the table coming in? That little thing? That's our plan. I'll talk about it. We'll talk about our recruitment activities. Ann Berber is going to talk about retention activities. Provost Freeman's going to talk about program prioritization. Then hopefully we've got most of the time for questions and answers and see what's on your mind. So, I like this slide. So that's the rotunda in the Capitol with a big dollar sign floating up into it. And I don't know if that's the deficit floating up or what the metaphor is here, but it's floating up. So, we have a new governor, Governor Rauner, and we have a legislature with two Democratic Houses, heavily Democratic Houses. And we have a structural deficit in the state. So, prior to the election, we had about a $4 billion structural deficit, meaning they were late paying their bills by about $4 billion, about a quarter worth of payments out of the $32 billion state operating budget. That's a big number, $32 billion, and then a $4 billion shortfall. So what they would do is just pay the bills late. They'd pay us a quarter late. The money they allocated to us, it came a quarter late, which creates cash flow problems. But now, on January 1st, that temporary income tax increase went back down. So that means they're more structurally out of balance. So they worked down to a $4 billion deficit from $12 billion. So that's a pretty big drop with that tax increase. But now the tax increase is gone, so now it's going to start creeping back up. And so the governor's got to figure out, and the legislature, over time, how do we get that down? And there's no magic answers to that. It's kind of like, how do I lose weight? Well, I eat less and I exercise more. How do we balance the budget? We spend less and we have more revenue. And that's what's going to have to happen at the state. So the governor on February 18th is giving his budget presentation. That's when he submits his budget. And my guess is that he's going to suggest we eat less and exercise more. He's going to tell us we need to cut significantly and that we need to raise revenues in select areas. And then he will send that proposal to Democratic Houses, and then they will begin their deliberations. So you're going to hear all kinds of things over the next five months. It's going to be great theater if nothing else, but it's a very serious topic. And you're going to hear some scary things out of there, and you're going to hear some amazing positive things. So, all calm, it's all part of the theater we're going to go through as we go through this negotiation process. So, what does that mean for us? We're probably going to have some kind of budget reduction at the university next year, and every agency in the state will. And there may be structural reorganization in the state. I'm guessing this governor doesn't want government to look just smaller but different. So, what does that mean for us? Let's take a number. Our state budget is $32 billion. Do you know how much we get from the state out of $32 billion? $93 million. So that's about a quarter of our budget. We have a little over a $400 million total operating budget for the university. $93 million's from the state, and let's do simple math because it's easy to multiply. 10%, let's say we had a 10% reduction, that would be $9.3 million that we'd have to deal with. Okay? So that's kind of, if you want to contextualize how we fit in the grand scheme of things and the challenges we are faced, that's it. Last year, we had a budget deficit in our budget. We'd had declining enrollments and declining state support for a decade or more. And we had about a $15 million budget deficit out of that $93 million, or out of the actually $400 million budget. And we balanced it. So my thanks to Provost Freeman, Nancy Suttonfield, our CFO, the core budget team. They figured out how to get our budget balanced without layoffs, furloughs, or dramatic program changes. That's, congratulations. That was a lot of hard work. Now, how did we do it? Well, we, all the vice presidents were charged with making reductions where they could and prioritizing who they needed to rehire. So, we have an 8% to 12% turnover rate in the institution each year. That's kind of the way higher it is. So 10% times our 3,500 employees is what? 350 employees? So then you can just add back, you know, as much as your budget allows you to add back. And that's what we did along with reducing select operating budgets. So that got us there. So, good for them. But hard decisions had to be made, and we didn't hire everybody we wanted, did we? I mean, you are all working hard. And we're all working hard because we have the same system we've always had, and we haven't reengineered the system. And if I asked for a show of hands and said, "Who in here knows a processes that have too many steps and take too much time and are cumbersome?" Would anybody raise their hand? Yeah, okay. Like everybody, two hands? Okay? He knows two. I bet if we had some focus groups in here today, we could come up with a list of the top 10 things we need to reengineer and make simpler. If we do that, we can streamline our processes, probably to a few fewer people than where out the rest of us using those processes. But we need to do that strategically, engage all of you in it, because you know how these processes are working or not working. So we need to look at that in the coming year. So I think we can, if we have to go through budget reductions, we can gracefully do that. We did it last year, and I really am appreciative of our team that worked so hard on that, as well as the vice presidents and the academic deans and the non-academic leaders in the institution. Great work, congratulations. So, you're going to hear about revenue enhancements. The governor's going to say, "I want to tax this stuff but not that stuff, and I want to cut all this stuff out." And the legislature's going to say, "Thanks for that, now we're going to go do our thing." Keep reading the papers and see what you get out of it and see if you can read the tea leaves. But sometime in May or June, we're going to start seeing it come into clearer focus. And we're probably going to see a government structured differently coming out of that. I think there's a desire on both sides to have a government that's in balance and meeting the state's needs, just as we want to meet the needs of our students. Okay, pull out your strategic plan. Universities usually write strategic plans that are, say, 200 or 300 pages longer than the one you're holding. And it's a different concept for a strategic plan. Traditionally in higher education, we'd say, "Here's a goal out there, maybe five years," or multiple goals out there, five years. And now we're going to write the directions, like the Google map directions. We're going to write all that down on everything you need to, every turn you need to make the next five years. And that's 200 pages. We are in such a rapidly changing environment in higher education right now, you can't write that map because you get out a month or two or three, and there's a building in the middle of the road where the road used to go, or there's a ditch there, or it didn't work. Now what do I do? Actually, I don't need that roadmap instructions. I need a compass. This is the compass. Here you are. And it's a compass you can use at any level you are in the organization. What we're arguing in this is that the value proposition for our students, faculty, staff, stakeholders, is about the connections in this thing. So, student career success, we're really, really, really invested in that. We want our students to come here and transformational experiences and succeed in their lives and their careers. And to do that, they need to have a very strong relationship with the academics in the institution. And probably across academic areas in the multidisciplinary world that they're going out into, they need to be ready for that. But how do you get ready for that outside world? Well, let's hook them up while they're here. Let's have students out doing internships and mentoring and service learning and international studies and research projects and communities, et cetera. Boy, for those of you who have studied abroad or done a volunteer project or done an internship as an undergraduate, it was really transformational. I see Kelly Bauer here from the newspaper, from the Star. She's living an internship. She's running a newspaper. Now what does she do when she gets out of here? Is she going to be a better reporter when she gets out of here? She wants to be a war reporter, by the way, which I'm proud of her for doing that. I don't, if I was your dad, I don't know if I'd tell you to do that, but that's important work. But think of what she's learned here in that position and how her life's going to be different because of that. She's going to be so far ahead of students that just sat in journalism classes. She'll go far, far, far. She'll start far, far ahead. Okay, we want to build that. And all that work needs to be supported by our supporting services. Probably most people in this room fit in the middle of the triangle, and supporting services, trying to facilitate all these relationships. We all have a role in doing that. That's the plan. So I'd encourage you to read all the pieces around the plan. It starts with our keystone goal, the pillars underneath it, and it has some strategic imperatives on the bottom here that try to frame where we're going. And those imperatives will change over time as we get to different places in the road and there's a ditch or a wall or whatever, but that's where we are today. So take it bad. Think about where you are in the triangle and how you strengthen these relationships. And if we do that, we're going to have enhanced student learning, enhanced student numbers, enhanced research, and enhanced outreach activities. Okay, that's the plan. So speaking of connected to the world, if you've been looking at our website this week, you've probably seen this top-left picture. And that's Professor Shear and one of these graduate students in Antarctica. Did you see what they found last week? So they're drilling through a half a mile of ice, right where the ice sheet goes into the continent, the Antarctic continent. And they're looking at, you know, the dynamics of the ice sheet and how it may be being affected by global warming and whatnot. And then they get to the water, a half mile down, and they find fish. There's not supposed to be fish here. So they made a biological discovery when they were really working on kind of the physics of the ice sheet and whatnot. So that's pretty cool. So global press, this could be a huge discovery force. And last year, their research where they found microbes in an undersea lake in the Antarctica was one of the top 20 discoveries according to NSF, I believe. So they are on fire. Now, if you're a graduate student, like Kelly's an undergraduate, you're a graduate student, you're doing that work, and you've made these amazing discoveries two years in a row, life where it wasn't supposed to be, how's your career started? They're on fire. So, great for them. In the top-right corner is Alex Comerschek. Did I get that right, Dean? Who's one of our students who is in education, and she went to Houston and did some student teaching down there. And I heard her talk a couple times, and she said she was going to a district that was really out of her comfort zone. Heavily Hispanic, low income, not where she was from, not sure I want to go, I'm kind of scared, I don't know if I want to do this. Went down and had a transformational experience. Fell in love with the community and the families, saw the change she could make, and now has been hired by that district. And she and her husband are moving down there this summer, this summer, to start her life and their lives and their careers down there. Another example of how this triangle worked, where the faculty and the students work together to get to the outside world, to have that experience. And when you hear her talk, it's hard not to get a little bit teary-eyed about what she found about herself and how she's going to go change the world. That's what we want from our students, and that's the experience we can give them. That's why we're a special institution. Hesit House. Does anybody know Hesit House? It's a homeless shelter in Aurora. Pretty amazing place. Large population. One of our law faculty members had been working there for some time, off and on. And there's a health clinic across the street for physical and mental health issues. And what they're finding was that many of the folks in Hesit House didn't have the wherewithal to understand what their rights were and what their benefits were, and Medicaid and other provisions. They needed legal help. How could you do that? How could you get legal help for people that are homeless and have no money? Maybe we could form a law clinic. And so that's what we've done. We've established a law clinic right next to the medical clinic. They have adjoining walls. And so if somebody comes in before they can access the mental or physical health clinics, they're probably going to need to know what those resources are that they have. So our law students are having life-transforming experiences, just as Alex did in Texas, in Aurora. And they're meeting with clients and learning not just the doctrine, but how to be a lawyer and how to lead a meaningful life as a law graduate. Very powerful. So if you ever have an opportunity to tour the Hesit House or the clinic there, I would encourage it. It is an amazing place. Navistar. Another example is on John here, I don't know, our Dean of Engineering and Engineering Technology. We have a master's program at Navistar in engineering. So that's a company that's gone through some ups and downs, and they've got some challenges, and they really needed more training for their employees to be successful. So we've got one on campus at Navistar. There's a where where we've linked out into the business. See the triangle working again? We've linked out into the world, and those students are having life-transforming experiences that are going to greatly enhance the economic viability of Navistar. Fantastic. And over time, as we build those relationships, I'm guessing Navistar's going to look kindly on NIU. They're going to be one of our supporters. Okay. That's our strategic plan. Let's talk about recruitment a little bit. You probably saw the numbers. I think they were in the paper. Kelly wrote about them today?
Yes.
So our enrollment right now is 19,000 students. So, we were down 2.6% from last spring. 2.6? Is that right? We've been working hard on these issues, but we've got a lot of work to do on the recruitment side and on the retention side. And Ann Berber is going to talk about that, the retention side, in a second. Let me just say a few words about recruitment. There's a lot of competition out there right now. And we've got groups of people coming together to really work hard on this. We have academic affairs working on academic programs, program revisions, the PLUS program, the general education program being revised right now, articulation with community colleges, et cetera. And marketing and communications, we're looking at who we're communicating with, how we're communicating with them, how do we integrate what's going on centrally versus all the colleges and other units, so we have a coordinated activity and message going out. Our enrollment management folks are looking at scholarship programs, they're looking at where we go to visit community colleges and high schools, how often we're there, what our messages are. We're working hard on those issues. And then, right before the holidays, we brought Littman Hernon, one of the top marketing and enrollment firms in the country in higher education. Outstanding firm. And they had us look at three buckets of potential students. They said, "Let's look at some of the low-hanging fruit that may be there. Let's look at students who have stopped out. They started, but they've stopped out. They're not at the university anymore." That's actually a fairly sizable group. They asked us to look at students that were admitted, but they never ended up enrolling. So they had some contact with us, they were interested in us, they got information on us, didn't come. Or students that hadn't gone that far, and they showed interest, they got materials for us, they contacted us, but they never applied. So you'd be surprised how many, we looked at, over the last four years, how many students were there? Well, there were 120,000 students that fit in those three buckets over the last four years. So 30,000 of that 120,000 are enrolled somewhere. 90,000 aren't. So, right on, I guess it was December 26th, we emailed them. I didn't email each one of them, and we emailed them. And in a little over a week's time, we had 44 applicants. Now, out of 90,000, that's a small ratio, but it's only a week. And it's a week for spring semester, they applied for spring semester. So we're anticipating that'll really help us going into the fall. All of us can help as we get into the farther down, the enrollment cycle, as we get them on campus, and we get to talk to them and in our departments. We really need to do that customer service piece and show them what a transformational opportunity they would have here. So in addition to reaching out that way, we're trying to partner with a variety of groups around the landscape. And let me just make a few comments here. That top-left corner, I'm signing a reverse articulation agreement with Jerry Weber, who's the president of Lake County Community College. A reverse articulation agreement's where a student might go to Lake for three semesters but transfer here before the associate's degree is earned. And then they'd start going to school here, and then transfer their credits back to Lake and get the associate's degree. So Lake gets credit for graduating a student who they did three of the four semesters, and we get the student maybe a semester early when it makes sense in an academic program where they're better served here than there. So it streamlines for the student, it gives them credit and gets the student here. We've got a number of those in the works, and I think those are really excellent examples. Let me go diagonally over to the bottom-right. Those are middle school girls, and they have "Why Engineering" t-shirts on. So we're, the College of Engineering and Engineering Technologies, reaching out, doing STEM middle school projects, trying to get girls interested in STEM careers. And hopefully they'll get interested in NIU, but we're reaching out into that pipeline, not just community colleges and high schools, but out into middle schools where it's so important. College of Health and Human Services Sciences is online completion program for students who have an associate's degree in hospitality management. That college also has developed articulation agreements with community colleges, helping articulate their programs. Outstanding work. We're doing reverse articulations with Kishawaki and Wabunzi and a variety of other schools. I think all those things are trying to point us at, how do we form better relationships up and down the pipeline, helping students get ready for us, letting them know the great opportunities they have here, and then bringing them in? That's not going to happen like that. That's hard work over time. And I know all the colleges are working hard on that in other areas, but I wanted to let you know there's a lot going on in that regard. Now, it takes a whole university to graduate students. Once they get here, they've also got to graduate. And back to the middle of the triangle, our staff in the triangle really are the ones that help students succeed here. And we've, this year, coming out of the Bold Futures Workshop last year, we talked about how important it is to treat people the way we would want to be treated, or the way we'd want our children to be treated if they were going to school here. And we started the "Ask Me" campaign. So hopefully you got your "Ask Me" buttons. I've got mine on. Do you have a question? Ask me, I'll help you. Now, that's kind of that customer service notion. And we've put up the posters around campus on the flagpoles and light poles and whatnot. And I just wanted to highlight a few of the folks up here. And they're here in the flesh. So when I say your name, could you stand up and like wave at everybody, turn around? So Christine Vila? Christine, thank you. Christine is an academic advisor in the College of Health and Human Sciences, and she came here as a student from Aurora in 2005, graduated with a degree in psychology in 2009, and she liked it so much, she came back and got a master's degree in education and school counseling. Good thinking. And Christine says her favorite part of her job is that lightbulb moment when the things click for the students, and she helps them navigate the steps needed to achieve their goals. I think that's a big deal for all of us when we see that light come on and they're glowing in front of us. Sonia Fagan? Sonia, if you call my office, here's who you talk to. Sonia is the Energizer Bunny that keeps this all going. She is positive and bright and deals with me on a daily basis, which is a big chore. And she always greets people with a great spirit, and we're so grateful to have her in the office. Thank you, Sonia. Jocelyn Santana? Program Manager and Training Coordinator in Career Services. Jocelyn's originally from Chicago. She entered our program in the 90s as a chance student and graduated with a BS in Special Ed in 2001 and completed her master's degree in Adult and Higher Ed. That's a great journey. She returned in 2007 as a Career Resource Center Manager, doing resume development, interviews, programming, helping our students get ready for their lives and their careers. And she's now focused on the important work in first and second-year success as a development and training coordinator, working across campus to find work opportunities that could be converted into internship opportunities for academic credit. That's powerful stuff if you're a student. Thank you for doing that, Jocelyn. Lori Elish-Piper? Hi Lori. Lori advises me on all things educational, I think. Most, many things educational, not all things, I guess. She is a great connector, often working behind the scenes, bringing together people with good ideas to make those ideas a reality. And she is high-energy. Since 1995, she's worked with NIU students, employees, community members on a variety of projects, such as the literacy clinic in the former Monsanto building, and with alumnus Aaron Jared and Rockford and other initiatives there. And she was joking and saying it might be time for us to update the banner because she has a new haircut. Sorry about that. These are, everybody's working hard. We couldn't put everybody in a poster. If you want to volunteer, we're going to put more up. But it's just an example of the Husky spirit that we've got here and how we want to help each other succeed and help our students succeed. And in that regard, if we do that, students are going to be retained. And if they're retained, they're going to graduate. And if they're graduating, they're going to go on and live amazing lives and careers. I want to turn it over to Ann Berber, Vice Provost. And Ann's going to talk to us about the retention activities, or some of the retention activities going on at the university to help us keep our students and have them be successful. Ann?
Thank you, President Baker. So, as you saw in this morning's Northern Star, the retention rate from the fall semester to the spring came in at 87%, which is the average for five years. And it was ever so slightly down from last year. We've all gotten on board as a campus and as the university and made retention ours. We're owning retention. But it takes time. It doesn't happen overnight. And so what we've been able to do to guide our retention efforts is we've asked the students why they leave. And here's the top reasons that they've given. And our retention efforts have tried very hard to focus on those reasons. And I want to applaud all of you because you've really shown commitment and concern and a great deal of creativity in developing new initiatives. And I want to thank you all for supporting initiatives that have been around and helping them scale up. So what I'd like to do this afternoon is just take out a few moments and talk about three initiatives that have been shown to work. And the first one of these is MapWorks. MapWorks is a student survey. It launches at three points in the course of an academic year, two surveys in the fall, one in the spring. And students take these surveys, and they have the opportunity to see their survey results. And what they can do when they see the results is step back, do a self-check, a moment of self-reflection. But faculty and staff also see the results, and in that sense, MapWorks functions as an early intervention tool. And what it allows us to do, as the slide illustrates, is we can assist students in their transition to college. We can identify students early on who may be at risk. And we can also connect students with services on campus. So MapWorks is really about connections. And you can see, it takes a whole community to work on MapWorks. And again, we're all doing, we've got variations of the theme on the triangle there. What we've discovered is that students who participate in MapWorks have some benefits. They are given additional support, clearly. They have higher GPAs. They enroll in more courses. They are at less risk for academic probation. But most importantly, they return to NIU. And what I want to do is just share one data slide with you. And this has to do with GPA. So the red, it's two years of data. The red shows what a GPA is, an average GPA is, for a student who participates in MapWorks. And the other color shows the GPA for students who haven't participated. And as you can see, it's quite dramatic. And we've been doing MapWorks surveys for six years, and this is the pattern that shows up again and again, year after year. What I want to talk about next is, I want to ask for your help. Okay? As I indicated, MapWorks is about to launch in a couple of days. It's the third survey. We always find this survey a challenging survey because it's hard to get the students out to take it. So help us. Join us. Be part of that MapWorks community. If you have contact and interaction with first-year students or first-year transfer students, urge them to take MapWorks. It's important. We've seen that there are benefits to the students who take MapWorks. The second initiative I'd like to talk about is first-year composition. First-year composition is an ideal venue for connecting with students. The classes are small, they're highly personalized, there's lots of interaction between the instructor and the student. So what happened in the course of the Bold Futures Workshops is lots of conversations started to take place. started taking place about how could we leverage this venue and take it to the next level in order to forge even stronger connections with students? And what emerged from those conversations was the program called Peer Advocates. And what that program does is it takes a student who had gone through the English cycle and pairs that student up with a freshman composition course. And that student works with the faculty of the course and also with the students themselves. We launched it a year ago this spring semester. We just started doing some preliminary work on the data from this past fall. And what we discovered in our preliminary work is that students who were in Peer Advocate freshman composition courses returned at a rate of 85% versus students who weren't in sections. But that number is only part of the story. It's a great number, we're happy with it, but there's a hidden story to it. And that is that the students who were in the Peer Advocate sections spoke about feeling an increased ability to learn, a greater connection, a stronger willingness to complete a degree and connect with, and in addition, to connect with their peers. But it wasn't just simply the students who were in the FY comp programs, but the Peer Advocates themselves, who talked about what a meaningful, rewarding, and enriching experience it was for them. So the program really speaks to that kind of attitudinal effective element of retention. Frequently, students start to check out emotionally, mentally, and psychologically before they check out physically. So we want to get those connections and we want to form them. The last initiative I'd like to talk about is what we call High Impact Practices, or HIPS. And NIU is clearly a very hip campus. We have hip students and we have hip faculties. We, we could win the Hipster Award, absolutely, no doubt about it. And President Baker highlighted some of those, some of those engaged learning activities that constitute HIPS. And so what we did is, we did a recent study because we wanted to see how effective HIPS were in students persisting from semester to semester and ultimately graduating in a timely manner. And what we discovered through our study was that the more HIPS that a student engaged in, in the course of his or her college career, the greater likelihood of persisting from semester to semester and graduating on time. So if you engaged in two HIPS in your career, your persistence was one level. But if you added another HIP, it even increased. And if you added a fourth, it increased more. And we took this all the way up to doing six HIPS in the course of an academic year. So HIPS are something that we're doing and we want to continue to support. And in that venue, we recently had a collaborative effort by the College of Liberal Arts and Sciences and the Office of Student Engagement and Experiential Learning to create a Student Engagement Fund. And what's great about this fund is that it's not only supporting HIPS, but it's doing it in a way that allows us to maximize the financial resources that we have. We're really using that money by this collaboration in an efficient and maximized way. The other thing that it does is it allowed us to be much more flexible and efficient in our business practices. So here's a case in which you can lower your hand, you know, for the business practices that are inefficient, one hand at least can go down as a result of this. So what I would like to do now is, in the spirit of strategic partnerships and efficiencies, I'd like to turn the stage over to Provost Freeman, who will speak about program prioritization.
I think by now, everybody should know that NIU is going to start a process of program prioritization. And I want to join President Baker and Vice Provost Berberk in giving a great shout-out to Kelly Bauer and the Northern Star, because if you haven't seen it, there's a very detailed and informative story that's front page and above the fold today. So even if you've read the story, even if you've seen the words "program prioritization" in a Baker report, what does that exactly mean? And I want to compliment Vice Provost Berberk for sending the message that it's about efficiencies and it's about partnerships, and it's not just a cutting exercise. Program prioritization is something that universities should be doing in flush times and in lean times. Because it encourages us to ask on a regular basis, what should we be doing that we aren't doing? What shouldn't we do at all? What do we need to keep doing? And what do we need to stop doing? And that's how we achieve the type of structure and process efficiency and re-engineering that the President alluded to. And we do this in a way that uses data. It uses data to answer those questions, to align our strategic priorities and goals with our budget and expenditures, to enhance our effectiveness as well as our efficiency, and to strengthen NIU overall as a result. And we are not alone in embarking on a program prioritization process. In a recent survey of over 100 institutions, colleges, universities, and community colleges, public and private, half of them were already undergoing some form of program prioritization or participating in some prioritization process, and another quarter were planning to do so. So that's good. It doesn't mean that we're behind the curve. It means that we have a lot of collective experience of other institutions that we can learn from, that we can use to help us find our way forward. The basic elements of program prioritization are shown on this slide. You need a game plan, guiding principles, something we all agree to as the ground rules. You need to inventory your programs, so you know which programs will be considered in the process. You need to agree upon criteria that will be used to evaluate the programs, both academic programs and administrative programs. You need data templates and submission formats that will allow the programs to take data, analyze it, create narratives that tell their stories in the most compelling ways so that the review panels that are charged with prioritizing or ranking the programs can do that using the best possible information available. And then you need processes for connecting findings to action steps. These elements are not, these building blocks, they're just not there overnight. And one of the things we can learn from all the other institutions that went before us is that it takes at least a year to really roll with program prioritization. So where are we in the process? Well, last fall, we started exploring program prioritization processes. We developed a coordinating team, and I'm going to talk a little bit more about that. And we started to communicate with the campus about our intention to move forward in this fashion. This spring, we're establishing the guiding principles. We're going to ask all of you to participate in a collaborative exercise to help us establish the criteria for evaluating programs and to nominate people to serve on the task forces or review panels that will actually be prioritizing our programs. Next fall, we'll be giving the programs the data that they need to tell their stories and make their cases. And the people, the faculty, the staff, the students, the alumni associated with programs will be analyzing those data. And then the task force will start to review what's submitted. And they will prioritize programs into five categories. We haven't named those groups yet, but the types of outcomes we expect are, this program should be enriched. This program should be maintained at the same level. This program should be restructured to establish more efficiency. This program should be minimized. Any of those are possible outcomes. It won't be until the end of spring 2016 that the recommendations that come from the task force will be used to inform the budget, so that will be the budget for fiscal year 17, the first one impacted by program prioritization. So in order to be guided by best practice, to learn from the experience of other universities, NIU took a fairly large team to a conference that was offered in Chicago. The conference was attended by 20 other institutions. There were no other institutions from Illinois, but there was one of our sister MAC institutions, Western Michigan University, represented there. And when you look at the list of names, that's here, I want you to note that these are people who have perspectives from across campus. They represent various groups associated with our shared governance systems. And most of all, collectively, they have the expertise that will be needed on campus to facilitate this process and the efforts associated with it. I know many of the team members are in the audience, so as I call their names and say a little bit about their role, if you wouldn't mind standing if you're here, I'd really appreciate that. Attending the conference and being a key part of our coordinating team, we have Jeff Reynolds, who is a data analyst in the Office of the Provost. He'll be helping the programs get the data that they need and helping them analyze those data as invited so that the stories are told appropriately. Ibrahim Abdulmodlib, he's in Saudi Arabia. I know he's not here. He's a faculty member in engineering, and he's the Chair of the University Council Resource, Space, and Budget Committee, Shared Governance Committee, that really helps the President and I make our budget decisions, along with the CFO and others. We have Susan Mini, the Vice Provost for Resource Planning, who knows a lot about budgets and space and human resources and other resources on campus. Together, Jeff and Ibrahim and Sue make up the data subgroup of the coordinating team. We have Bill Pitney, who I think is here. He's the Faculty Senate President and the Executive Secretary of University Council. We have Brett Coriel, who is our Chief Information Officer and also represents a Cabinet-level Vice President. And Mark Falcoff, a professor in the College of Law, who's headed for a long time the Academic Planning Council, the Shared Governance Committee of Faculty Senate that manages program review. Together, Bill and Brett and Mark are really helping us with implementation of program prioritization. They're the ones who are designing the processes that will be used to seek feedback on evaluation criteria and seek nominations for the task forces. And then we have Denise Shane-Bachler, the Dean of College of Business. She has a marketing background, which is relevant here, as well as representing the dean's perspective. We have Andy Small, who I know I saw in the audience earlier. Andy's the former president of Operating Staff Council, and he's still very involved at a statewide level with the state university civil service system. And we have Kelly Westner-Michael, who's Associate Vice President, Student Affairs, Dean of Students, who has a perspective of co-curricular activities and a student lens. Together, Denise, Andy, and Kelly make up our communications subgroup. And then the effort is coordinated by Carolyn Douglas, Vice Provost for Academic Planning, and me. And so when I say this is a coordinating team who's here to facilitate the process, I really want to emphasize that. The people on the previous slide are not making decisions in their roles on the team. They are really the ones who are coordinating the flow of information from all the different entities on campus who need to be consulted back and forth. So for example, the coordinating team's communications subgroup is working with marketing and communications and IT and others on campus to develop a website. And that website will be launched next week. It'll have a frequently asked questions system. It'll have a place where you can ask or comment anonymously on the program prioritization process. And I'll have copies of all these PowerPoints and materials. The data sub-team is working with institutional research, registration and records, academic analysis, sponsored projects, and others, along with the Cabinet, the Council of Deans, faculty members on various committees, to make sure that we understand what the data needs of the programs are and that we get them what they need to tell their stories in a concise manner and allow them to work effectively to create the narratives. And then, again, we'll be communicating all along the timeline with everyone in the audience. So our guiding principles, the ground rules for program prioritization. Well, first off, let me say, there are no sacred cows. All programs, academic and administrative, will be subject to program prioritization. There are no decisions being made in advance, and all decisions will be made using data. Any program that undergoes diminution or elimination, we will honor the contracts of the associated employees, and we will guarantee for academic programs that may be diminished or eliminated that students can finish their academic programs, get their degrees. This isn't any different than what we do now. On a more ad hoc basis, we eliminate degree programs. We eliminate other activities. One point in time, we probably had a whole unit devoted to Selectric typewriters or computer punch cards, but we don't have those units anymore. We made sure the employees who worked in those units were retrained so that they could contribute to NIU in other ways, and that's what we'll do here. When we eliminate majors or minors or emphases or certificates, we teach out our students, and we'll do that here. So what is exactly a program? I've talked about administrative programs. I've talked about academic programs in the context of prioritization. What am I talking about? A program is any activity or collection of activities that consumes resources, and those are human resources, financial resources, space, equipment, and time. But programs and departments are not the same thing. And that's true for academic programs, and that's true for administrative programs. An academic department will be the home to many different academic programs. In any one department, there will be majors, there will be minors, there will be clusters of general education courses, there'll be certificates, there may be research centers and institutes. All of those are individual programs. Within an administrative department, take athletics. We'll have a variety of teams, men's and women's basketball, football. We'll have athletic compliance. We'll have student support advising under athletics. We'll have multiple programs. So a program is not the same as a department or a division. When we use the words academic and administrative in the context of program prioritization, we use them in a very specific way, not the way we use them in casual conversation. So that an academic program is really something that's either instructional or research-oriented. Some of the things that we normally consider academic on our campus, like the library, like advising, are actually considered administrative in the context of program prioritization. And that's shown to be a best and effective practice on other campuses that have undergone this process. So I've talked about the fact that we have to pick the criteria that we're going to use to evaluate programs, and NIU hasn't done that yet. And we're going to ask all of you in the audience to help us do that. One starting point that many campuses have used as a discussion point, a discussion starter for prioritization criteria are the criteria that were published in the book that's shown on this slide. Book published in the mid-'90s, Prioritizing Academic Programs and Services. There were 10 criteria published in this book. You see them on the slide. They have some very good aspects. They actually honor the history of programs. They provide opportunities for the programs to use quantitative and qualitative data to tell their stories. And they have a clear place for the voices of students and the voices of alumni. But this is not the be-all and end-all, and many campuses think that 10 criteria are too many, and they collapse them into an alternative version such as the one seen here. Interestingly, the criteria shown on this slide were used on a couple of campuses for both academic and administrative programs. It's just that the questions that were asked underneath each of these differed for the academic and administrative programs. We don't know what our criteria are going to look like. But Bill Pitney and his subgroup are working hard on constructing a survey that will be distributed by Qualtrics. And people in the audience and elsewhere on campus will be asked their opinions, how many criteria, what weights, which are the ones that are important. There'll be a place to write in criteria. We'll take that feedback. We'll bring it to a joint task force of the Academic Planning Council, the Resource, Space, and Budget Committee, and we'll add some others. We'll probably add students so that students have some voice in selecting the criteria. And that will be the way that we choose our program criteria. Once the criteria for evaluation are selected, we'll start the process for picking the task forces. And again, we'll have nomination forms. We'll have a process for submitting nominations. Academic programs will be evaluated by a task force that's comprised completely of tenured faculty. And there'll be faculty representatives from all seven colleges, but there won't be representatives from all seven colleges so that every college or program has an advocate. We'll have seven colleges represented for their collective wisdom. Similarly, the administrative task force will have faculty on it, but we'll also have staff representation, and there'll be representation from all 10 divisions. But people won't be there to argue for their program, they'll be there for their collective perspective. The time to argue for your program is when you analyze the data and submit the program narrative. People who serve on these task forces, we want them to be nominated by peers for what we're calling a trustee mentality, that someone who has a truly institutional perspective, who puts the good of NIU before their personal good, before the good of the program they participate participate in or the college that they sit in. So think carefully about who you know that might be of a trustee mentality, suitable to sit on the task force, someone who, when they're asked to serve on a committee, shows up, does the job. Nominate them, follow the instructions that will be put out in March, and then the President and I, the Chief Financial Officer, Al Phillips, and Bill Pitney, our Exec Secretary of University Council, will get together and figure out who's going to serve on the two task forces. So, again, just to reiterate, what can you be doing now for program prioritization? Right now, you can plan to participate in the survey. The survey will be launched in February. Everyone will get an email and will be able to provide support in case you're having problems completing the survey. Start thinking about task force nominations. Who do you know that has a trustee mentality? I bet if I asked every single person in this room to take out a piece of paper and write down five members of our faculty and staff who you think fit that bill, we'd have a whole lot of overlap between those lists, because we know who the institutional leaders are, and that's who we really want to encourage to serve on the task forces. Start lobbying them now. And again, the other thing you can do is start to think about the programs that you steward. Are there new programs that you want to create or put forth? Are there ways to restructure the programs that you're in charge of to create synergy or more efficiency so that you can incorporate that into your program narrative? And are there programs that are in your division that have kind of become moribund? That, you know, you haven't actively done anything about getting them off the books, but they're really not viable? You could think about working on that now, to think about, is there a new place for them to go? Or should I submit them to program prioritization, or should I just think about doing something different with them now? So that's the call to action. And with that, I believe the floor is open to questions, not just from me, but also from Vice Provost Birbrick and President Baker. Thank you for your attention.
All right, who's first? Sorry it took so long, but I think it was important information for us to get out where we are at the state level, budget level, recruitment, retention and then program prioritization. There's an editorial comment by the dog. Who's first? Brad, you want to start with one online? Oh, okay. While she's coming down, read us one offline from online.
Yes, President Baker. We have a question, and it's associated with the recruitment and I guess retention component as well, but it says, "When will the admissions and financial aid pages for incoming freshmen be offered in Spanish for the parents?"
Good idea. I don't know the timing answer to that. Anybody from financial aid or admissions here? The answer is, "Good idea, I'm not sure, and I'll go check."
Well, and there was follow-up on that, too, and that, you know, we talked about Lippmann-Hern and the initiatives that we're working on with admissions. Will personal contact via email be used to reach out to the stopouts that we talked about that we're going actively recruiting?
Yeah, those emails have already gone out, and I think there's a phone calling exercise that may be involved in that as well. So, I think that's a really good idea to do that personal reach out and touch.
And then one more follow-up on that was when we were talking about MapWorks with the students, do we ask students why they stayed? We're interviewing students why they leave. Do we ask students why they stay?
You know, some of that came out during the spring Bold Futures Workshop, where we asked folks to go interview. Some of you probably participated in that. Almost, what, 900,000 students?
College of Business also does it on a regular basis.
You want us to talk a little bit about that?
No, I was just adding that.
No, take it away. If you want to read that, I think that's still on my webpage, the summary of that Bold Futures stuff. A lot of it was social attachment. Why do I stay? Because somebody made a difference, like these people sitting in the front row. You know, somebody made a difference. They connected with them, they got engaged in a student teaching project, they got into a research project, they joined a club, they formed a personal relationship, they had a relationship with a janitor on their floor who they talked to every night and formed a personal bond with. You know, there's a lot of it was social attachment, advising, somebody there to help. That was a lot of it. You can move it.
No, I think I'm okay. Everybody can hear me. I have a loud voice. I wrote down my question, just because I didn't want to screw it up. And it's not even a question you don't have to answer, it's more food for thought, but it pertains to finding and utilizing the excellence already existing on campus, and that's in all of us. And to give you a background, what kind of started me on this topic is I looked at a sampling of administrative positions and compared them to several other public Illinois universities of similar size and structure. And what I found was, positions paying approximately $40,000 or less, we were by far the lowest in every category and significantly lower in our salary. However, in positions of $40,000 or more, we actually were one of the top paying, and I kind of thought that was odd. So, that brings me to knowing this, you know, I would recommend looking at administrative employees who currently are in this lower category, and finding those employees who have been consistently dedicated to student customer service and such for many years, probably, and perhaps promoting them instead of hiring more high-end positions. And then, you know, this would obviously save money in wages and health benefits. And then, on the academic side, we have the untapped potential with many of our adjunct employees, who, you know, don't feel so connected with the NIU community. And just one example, there's staff who have written award-winning textbooks, which aren't even being promoted or used in the NIU classes. So I think an interactive meeting with, you know, just the adjuncts to give them a voice, that could be tapping resources we really haven't looked at and ideas they could generate, and a lot of times they have great views and they're more connected with the working world and things like that, and bringing them in and expanding programs, again, it would be less cost because they're already employees here. And on a lighter note, we could really use music in the coffee shop. I would recommend smooth jazz, but that's just me.
Well, you can get music there Monday nights with our students playing every Monday, and I would encourage you to do that, they're great. On the salary stuff, I agree with that. We're trying to do that and restructure, and no sacred cows, the program prioritization will look at those factors, top, bottom, left and right. At the senior level, I've tried to reduce the number of vice presidencies. We're down about $300,000 in salary in the senior administration since I came on board. We'll keep looking at those structures and see if we can streamline that even further. So I think that's an important point that you're making there. You know, and as you know, we've not had a compensation increase for three years, and that's a problem. And so those low wages got baked in at the low level because we haven't had any way to increase them. So as we go through this program prioritization process, we're going to be looking to where do we spend our money best? Is it on programs, or is it on compensation, or is it on facilities, or is it on what our priorities are? But there may be a way in here, if we get more efficient, we release more money into the system, that we can get the salaries worked on and up to where they need to be. They're not where they need to be. Do you want to say any more than any of that? Next.
Hi. I'd like to know what kind of programs or activities that you have that are going to be promoting students to stay on campus instead of leaving on Thursday night and coming back Sunday? I've been here a long time, and I hear a lot of students talk about there isn't activities here to keep them here. So that would promote retention.
Right on. You're actually singing the song that I've been trying to talk about some. You know, that's being worked on in a variety of areas, and it's being worked on in academic areas, in the residence halls, with student organizations themselves, trying to get more programming onto campus in the weekends. Have you bought your Brad Paisley tickets yet for the Convocation Center? So, you're absolutely right. We need to make this a 24/7 residential campus. I know some have to commute, and that's great for them, but let's use the advantage we have of being a residential campus and having students here. So there are a lot of student organizations actually leaning forward, thinking about that very same thing. Lisa, do you want to say anything about this?
I just want to echo your shout-out to the Student Association and the student organizations, because they've been really trying to find out from students, what is it that we need to do to better publicize what's already going on on campus? What is it that would really keep you here that we're not doing on campus? Is it the type of programming? Is it the location of the programming? You know, if you've been looking in the newspaper, we have the Student Association working closely with the DeKalb community to think about what might be better for them in terms of social interactions in the community, and I think we're moving towards that goal, and it is a very important one.
And probably not just on campus, but the broader community that Lisa was talking about, you know, how do we make it a really cool college town? And the mayor's leaning forward, there are a number of business leaders in the community trying to figure those pieces out, potentially some investors. So we're working those angles in the background, too. You're right, we need to do more.
President Baker, while we're...
While she's coming up.
Oh, okay.
Go ahead, hit me with a question.
This was one that was submitted. Why are only tenured faculty allowed to be on the Academic Program Prioritization Task Force? What about tenured-track faculty, visiting faculty and instructors?
Okay, I'm happy to take that. It has been identified as a best practice at the universities that have done this, to have tenured faculty, meaning tenured associate or full professors, serve on the task forces for a couple of different reasons. One is the long-term institutional perspective that they bring. The other is, is that these are task forces that will be working in a confidential manner, but that will be making some difficult decisions. And so in addition to bringing the wisdom of that long-term connection that a tenured faculty member has, they're also bringing the academic freedom and the safety of tenure to the decision-making process. There can be no question with a tenured faculty member about bullying or retaliation, and that's probably important in this context. With respect to full-time faculty who are instructors in our collective bargaining unit, we talked a lot, and we are still talking about how folks can be incorporated. The contract actually prohibits that type of activity, and so I've been working with people in HR to find out what the possibilities are for our instructors to be part of the Academic Program Task Force. It's not an easy question.
Hello. Hello. So I just wanted to know, it's more on a student side. As a college parent, I find it that the university has a lot of things for traditional students that are on campus, and being a college parent, I've noticed that there's a very big community of college parents on this campus, and that there are not a lot of resources for the college parents. Like, for instance, I work at the hotel desk, and sometimes I don't get off work until 11:30, 11:45. I don't have a car. One of my friends, she'll watch my daughter for me, but she stays at Northern View. I stay on Hillcrest and Normal. So it's like the buses stop running at a certain time, and the only resource, I don't have any other resources. I try to use Safeline, but they don't supply car seats or booster seats for kids anymore. So it's kind of hard for me when I have other things that I need to do, and I feel like I'm just being treated a little unfair just because I have a kid and there are not resources for me on campus.
I see the chief squirming in his chair. Chief, you want to say anything about Safeline? So, Chief, you want to hit the mics for those, there's folks online that, we have a couple hundred people watching us online, so the mics are good. Public safety and Husky Safeline does provide car seats, and they will transport you and your child. If someone told you that, they're incorrect, and I will check on that as soon as I leave That's a good answer. And I'm in the phone book, my email's in the phone book. If you ever have a problem with any of my staff, you contact me directly. Chief Phillips. I'm glad you asked the question, now we know.
I still want to know what other resources are going to be on campus for college parents, because I feel like there are very few. Like, I know the off-campus and non-traditional housing office, but as a freshman, I didn't know about that office. I found out about it by myself, it was no way of me knowing. Living situations, I ended up staying at Northern View, and financially, that wasn't something that was good for me. And from my understanding, Northern View was supposed to be family housing. But I'm still in debt now because I stayed at Northern View and my rent was so high, so it's like, I feel like financially, that wasn't a best option for a college parent.
So somehow we've got to get you identified, incoming students like you identified, and then the resources. So in the orientation program, for example, that would seem to be a logical place where we could hook you up. Do you guys want to say anything about orientation and how we might do it? I saw your eye back there glimmering.
Yes, can't hide. Yes, this summer, we're switching to a two-day program for our incoming freshman students, and one program component will be to make sure that our students who are living off-campus or commuting, who are not living in the residence halls, will have a session that's just for them, so that they're able to learn about those resources, and it's presented by staff that will have that information and be able to make sure that those students feel like they're comfortable in their transition and know where to go when they have questions or need help, and make sure that their needs are being met.
And where would they go now if she had more questions?
I would start with off-campus and non-traditional student services would be where I would start. They also have a student group that's associated with them. Yep, absolutely, and their Assistant Director there, Jeff, is very friendly and willing to help students with whatever they may need.
And the center's downstairs?
Absolutely, it's right next to my office, so you can come say hi to me as well.
Downstairs in this building.
Can I just, I guess, you know, I'd like to sort of follow on and show you how going through program prioritization could actually help with a longer-term solution. Obviously, we want students who we have traditionally called non-traditional to have the services that they need, because they're becoming most of our students, and they're students who are really important to us and to the future of this country. And we don't have a lot of new resources coming in. So as the demographics of our student body change, this is the type of reinvestment that might emerge as the result of a program prioritization process. So when the office that serves student parents and non-traditional students analyzes the data and puts in their narrative, they'll be able to show that the students they serve and the students who have these needs are growing exponentially, and they can show in an opportunity analysis, if you gave us this much more in terms of resources, we would be able to serve this many more students, and that would make a real difference in terms of retention, and it would make a real difference in terms of our community. Another thing that emerges sometimes in program prioritization is the identification of targets for philanthropy. So if this is a real need, if we need student resources for student parents, for non-traditional students, for working adults, and we don't have those, let's just take the student parent piece. That's something that might appeal to somebody who's already completed NIU, went to school here as a parent, and would like to help others, like to reach back with a helping hand. They might make a donation specifically to that cause, and we would be able to have that discussion with our Vice President for advancement. There's some things that are never going to be good philanthropic targets. Nobody really likes to donate to fix leaky pipes or cracked sidewalks or deferred maintenance, but I would invest in you, and I'm guessing there are probably other people out there who might donate money to that type of cause. So this is sort of how, on a long-term basis, program prioritization lets you look at what's different now than it was 10 years ago. Our mission is to serve students, our mission is student career success. If we're not putting the dollars where they need to be, this will help us relocate them. And it's just one example of what might emerge from program prioritization.
Hi, I'm Sandy Flood. I'm President of the NIU Instructors, and I want to go back for a minute to what you said before about our collective bargaining agreement precluding us from being involved in this process. There is nothing in there that really precludes that at all. We teach about 10,000 students a semester, a lot. Many of us have been here many years, even longer than many other people.
So I know that, which is why I asked the question about how do we include instructors in the task forces? And maybe I was given incorrect information, but I was told that we could not ask that type of time-consuming activity of our instructors. So let's have a conversation offline and figure this out.
Definitely, because I think there are some people who would love to be involved in this.
Great, I look forward to it. Let's make it work.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, thanks for taking my question. On prioritization and programs putting forth the narrative, I'm curious if there will be any resources made available to the programs as they best represent themselves, maybe guidelines or training?
Absolutely. Where in the... Absolutely, we're in the process of developing those. We have people from all over campus who work with data, from institutional research, from registration and records, from the provost's office, figuring out how we create something that's easy for the task forces to use, easy for the program to use, provides enough consistency, and still tells a story. And so right now, they're working really, really hard behind the scenes to look at what other universities have done and what we can do to have data available, data support available to help programs. We all have different skills in terms of interpreting data, and we don't want that to be a deciding factor. And then we want to make sure we have the appropriate metrics for each program that still tell a meaningful story. So if you're in the School of Music, I don't think you are, but let's just pretend that you are, you know, music has music education programs, it has studio and performance music programs, and the metrics for those are going to be different. You know, if you're out giving an invited trombone concert, that's very different than writing a textbook. If you're doing the history of music, or looking, you know, at music throughout history to tell a narrative, you might be publishing a different kind of journal paper. But faculty who are publishing books, or publishing papers, or trying new innovative strategies, or out there being invited to play their trombone at the Berklee School of Music, all of those things are faculty productivity, and we want to be able to make sure that we can capture that. So there will be support, and we're working through the details. And I'm sure if what we offer isn't satisfactory, that people won't hesitate to let us know.
Very good, thank you.
I work in advising in the College of Liberal Arts and Sciences, so I work directly with the students when they come to me and they cannot pay to be here. And we have a number of students who are not here on the, on spring semester because they could not afford to come back. And not because they didn't want to be here, and these are students who, they're solely funded by financial aid, their grants, they did everything right, but their housing is an enormous bill, that in looking at that with them and trying to figure out how to get them back here for spring, it was just impossible. So my, I guess what I would like to know is, what are we doing financially to make it more affordable for our students to return? Because the retention is going to get worse without financial help for these students, or at least making it affordable, at least in the housing aspect, because we now no longer have the housing in Lincoln or Douglas that was more affordable than, say, New Hall.
Okay, great question. So there's a couple sides to the ledger we need to think about. One is the actual reduction in what we charge students, the other is the financial aid side. So in the reduction of what it costs students, we've, a year ago, we held tuition room and board flat for incoming students from the previous year. And this year, it went down largely to a, about $560 for the most expensive plan. The tuition room board went down about $560. So next year's freshmen will pay less than this year's freshmen do. So we're trying to keep those down. Now, to keep the costs down, we have to be more efficient. So that goes back to program prioritization. How do we, as an institution, increase our efficiency and have lower costs, while at the same time, supporting all the faculty and staff in the institution that need to do their work? So you can't just give away tuition because we don't have the revenues to pay all of you and run the institution. We actually need that coming in. So then, where do we get more financial aid? So, or how do we better allocate the financial aid we have? So we are looking at how we reallocate our financial aid. We put more of an emphasis on need this year than merit, increasing the proportions there. We'll continue to look at those. We worked with a firm called Lippmann-Hern, not Lippmann-Hern, Noel Levitz last year at that, and we're working with Lippmann-Hern this year to relook at those allocations and see if they're in the right place. We also need to do a coordination between central financial aid support and what's going on in the colleges. So there are different pools. There's operating dollars that we take out of our budget and don't use for other things, and give that to students. There's also private dollars that are raised, and that's got to be an emphasis in the colleges to support students in those programs. So as we go into a fundraising campaign, that's going to have to be a key thing that we're working on, scholarship dollars. And as Lisa hinted, that's something we can raise money for. We have 240,000 alumni, and most of them care about this place, and they care about the students here, and they want to help students be successful. So I think we can, we can do a lot in the philanthropic world as well.
May I ask another question?
You bet.
Also, on the point of retention, in advising, one of the areas that we see in trying to make a final push in each semester is that students come to us very scrambled at the very last minute, being admitted in the first week of classes. We're having difficulty getting them integrated into our classes, into our campus in general. And these are the students who, after a semester, either don't do well, or they fail out, or they, they don't come back. And so my concern is that if we are pushing retention, that are not, that we aren't necessarily pushing numbers, that we're pushing quality, in trying to make sure that the students that we keep here are not necessarily the ones that we're just trying to fill bodies in seats. And I really feel like we're at a point where we have to focus on the students that are really going to stay here and make a difference. And I just feel like we're just at a point where, you know, I, we have real, we are creating a situation where we are negatively viewed by parents that come in and are upset because their daughters and sons can't get classes, they're coming in and, you know, I'm not going to come this semester because you can't help me. And so I just feel like we're at a, at a point where we have to make sure that we, we are doing this the right way and not pushing numbers.
Yeah, I agree with that. We can't lower our standards in the institution. I absolutely agree with that. And when you said, before you go, when you said students that came in scrambling at the last minute, was that because we didn't inform them soon enough, or they just applied late?
They applied late, or they applied on time, and we did not get back to them, and they didn't come through our file, until file completion, or during the first week of classes.
Yeah, I was trying to parse that, because I've heard both pieces. Unfortunately, this fall, we had some turnover and some technology glitches, and we got behind in our processing. And so we had a backlog, and some students for spring didn't hear until late. And we've taken care of that now, thanks to the employees and admissions and other areas, registrar, et cetera, financial aid that rallied to work down that backlog over the holidays and recent weeks. So that was a lot of work, thank you for doing that. And we'll stay on top of it next year, so we don't get that backlog. But there's the other group, too.
But this is not the first time that this has happened, though. I don't want, I apologize to interrupt, but this is, this happens semester after semester after semester, so it's not necessarily backlog just this last time. This is, this is an ongoing thing that gives NIU a very bad reputation.
Right. So back to the process reengineering idea that I had before, we shouldn't have that. We should have quick turnaround, in a day or two, people should hear, not in a few weeks. So as, as we try and recruit students, if they don't hear from us, they're going to go somewhere else. So it's absolutely important for us to do that. So we've got to rework those systems with training, with new technology systems, with new criteria to allow us to make quicker decisions, and rework that whole process. So you're exactly right, we can't make the same mistake year after year, it's critically important. Thank you.
Can I just add one comment to that?
You bet.
And naturally, not on the piece about scrambling and students in advising, but I want to go back to the students who really wanted to come back, who were in good standing, and who didn't have the money. And, you know, President Baker alluded in his opening to what's going to be the conversation in Springfield, and it's going to be wild and crazy, and there's going to be a lot of back and forth about what gets cut. And I think we all know that our state appropriations aren't coming back to the level that they were a decade ago. But we really do have an opportunity to say, at this point in time, that we're doing everything we can to be good stewards of the dollars that the states give us. We're focusing on process reengineering, we're looking at program prioritization, we're doing everything we can to focus on student success and retention and persistence and graduation of our students, we're being accountable. It's also important to remind Springfield that they should be accountable, not only for the funding, to us for our infrastructure, but also for monetary assistance program funding. We shouldn't ever hear midway through the year that math funding that was promised to our students isn't going to show up in their checking accounts. And so I think, instead of saying, "We want more," it's much more effective to say, "We're good stewards, we're really trying, we're being accountable, you be accountable," and as you look at where to cut, and you think about the future of the state and our economic competitiveness, higher education and student aid is not where we should be cutting in Springfield.
I'll vote for you, Lisa.
I'm too tall, okay, we'll fix it this way.
I don't have that problem.
I just put this down a minute ago. My question may be premature, because we have to go through the process of discerning what these criteria will be for evaluation and prioritization, but considering the financial equity between programs, I happen to have involvement in two programs that are a little upside-down with regard to how much capital investment and financial responsibility has to go into a program, and what your return on investment is going to be, namely, two programs, one in the outreach for the Motorcycle Safety Project of Illinois, for motorcycle safety training on the NIU campuses in Northern Illinois and around the area, and instructed with that program. And it takes a lot of money to prop up that organization, and to provide those opportunities for people around Northern Illinois, as well as the students and local folks here who benefit from being able to be involved in those, those programs as they are right now. The other part of it is, for an example, the media-centric society that we are now, we rely on technologies, lots of technologies, expensive technologies. And I've been able to be a part of a program for many, many years, where the number of students that come out of the program isn't nearly as significant as the impact that those students have as professionals in the role of responsibilities that they accept in our society, being involved in mass media and communications. As a part of the programming of LANS, these, these programs may be monstrously expensive on a budget line, as compared to the other programs in that college. And to be able to look at the equity of distribution of funding on a student-by-student basis of what their value is when they leave the university is a little unnerving, when you look at those kinds of programs that couldn't exist if the investment wasn't made to support it, and if the money to support it wasn't sustained. And those students would lose out desperately. And the university would lose out on all of the opportunities that they would bring to promote and provide as alumni with their ability to be public speakers, and to be able to be representatives of the kind of alumni that you ask that they become. So I'm asking, in that criteria, what, if anything, can be described that's going to give them that equity?
So it seems to me that, like many people, when you see program prioritization and you think about the program that's most near and dear to your hearts, or the program that's most near and dear to your hearts, you start to think, "I might not do well because my program isn't the cheapest." And program prioritization is not about keeping the cheapest programs, or the programs with the best return on investment narrowly defined in terms of dollars. I mean, truthfully, if that was all we wanted to do, we could get a spreadsheet and do it without nine to 12 months of deliberation and collaboration. We're a university, we're not a business where profit is the bottom line. And when we look at the value of a program, we, now, we have to have money to operate, we can't go bankrupt. But when we look at the value of a program, we look at how the students contribute to society, how the program contributes to the reputation of the university, the essential nature of the program. Heating oil, snow removal, you know, HVAC is pretty essential. It's probably not the most cost-effective thing that we have here, but I don't think anybody would suggest that we turn off the heat. I think snow removal would be in the same category, and I'm darn sure that payroll would be in that category, right? Nobody's going to suggest eliminating payroll, or they might suggest that we could do something a little more efficiently. Could we have fewer steps in a process? Could we turn down the thermostat a little? And, you know, I don't see the Dean of Liberal Arts and Sciences here, but I'm guessing his physics program is probably more expensive than motorcycle safety, and yet, we would, is he here? Am I right?
Motorcycle safety is physics.
Ah, yeah. Well, and here you have the best probable reason we won't eliminate motorcycle safety. But, but there are no sacred cows or a priori decisions, so. So I think that as we have a conversation about the criteria, and as we start to show the campus examples of how you justify the value of the program, and reference all of the criteria to make the case, the type of fear and, you know, apprehension that was just expressed will diminish, and people will start to think creatively as they look at the data. You know, I'm doing really great in categories one to five, but I don't look that good there. And is the reason I don't look that good there because my program is of a nature where I just can't? Or is the reason I don't look that good there is because there are things I should stop doing and things I'm not doing that I should be doing? And so I think that's the type of thinking that we want to have evolve from this process.
It's 2:30, let's, should we do one more, and then?
There is a gentleman who was waiting in line there.
Okay, go for it. And then 2:30 was our appointed hour, so you can be the last, and if you have other questions, we'll, we'll get those taken care of online.
I'll be quick about this. I speak on behalf of the wonderful support staff here in the university, and we are constantly told and showed in imagery that we are the heart of the university, the nucleus, and we firmly believe that we are. And what would you say to kind of bolster the dwindling morale on campus among support staff, when we're being told in the same breath that there is no financial ability to raise any rates or anything like that, but our almost monthly reading about new hires upwards of a quarter of a million dollars and things like that? And there just seems to be a great disconnect between the imagery that was shown with us being the focal point and the most important, but we are in fact the sole group of employees who have a hiring freeze, and things of that nature. And I'll connect that to retention, which seems to be the focal point of our discussions as of late. I spoke with a student who actually decided not to come back to the university because he was sick of dealing with people in offices who had bad attitudes, who didn't know what they were talking about, because we're constantly, it's like a revolving door. Because plain and simple, the amount of compensation that we can offer to people coming in is inadequate, to say the very least. So I feel that there seems to be some sort of disconnect between building from the top and trying to build retention, when the people at the bottom, and I say that quite literally, are feeling that they're unsupported and almost unable to do their job properly.
Good comments, thank you. I'll, and it echoes some of the tone of a couple of other comments we had today as well. As I mentioned earlier, we've actually reduced the administrative expenses for the leadership team at the cabinet level, and eliminated some vice presidencies. We're going to keep working on that. And I think the things that you just talked about underscore what Lisa's been talking about, the need for program prioritization, putting our money where we need to put it. And compensation is one of those places. So the reality is, we've lost 5,000 students at this university in the last decade. That's a lot of revenue, and it's a lot of lives we're not touching and helping them succeed. That's a big deal, we need to turn that around. And we've lost $25 million in state support in the last decade, that's a lot of money. So the reality is, we've got the money we've got, now we need to reduce the expenses and then prioritize how we expend it on the most important things, helping students succeed, and helping them succeed, meanings, keeping the faculty and staff here, the high-quality faculty and staff. So we're going to have to address the compensation issue. We've got to go through this process in a difficult financial environment, and that's going to cause, cause all of us, hopefully, to engage in this process very effectively, and figure out how do we become a stronger institution? You know, and when we raised our hands and said, "I know processes that aren't working so good," make them more efficient, be part of that, so that we can take the resources we capture there and spend it on the right things. So I think that's the path we've got to take. There's not going to be a magic gem that comes from Springfield to solve this problem, I think it's on us, and we can control our own destiny and do that. I appreciate the question. If you have other questions, you can email me, president@niu.edu, and we'll put those on a on our Frequently Asked Questions page. Thanks for coming.